Notification been made.
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
I'd like to call to order the meeting. We'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Rogers. Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Zaffel.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve minute, uh, meeting minutes for April 20th, 2021.
So moved, Zaffel.
Second.
Ellis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Without objection, I'd like to make a request of council that we move item 11A, which is a mayoral appointment, uh, to the, um, fire commission, excuse me, the police commission, ahead into this spot, uh, in the interest, uh, for the, um, applicant. Any objection? Okay, I'd like to, uh, um, bring to council, um, a mayoral appointment of Mr. Tim Gossett. You have all of his information in front of you. Tim, if you could come up to the podium. Um, he's here and available to answer any questions. I'm very excited to have Tim, um, join and appreciate his willingness to serve the community. One of the, the main objectives I had in this, um, position was to have somebody that had local police, um, experience. Uh, Tim, as you see from his resume and what he does, uh, has done for the last 20-plus years, uh, definitely fits that role. And as a citizen and a community, I'm really excited to bring him to the council. I'd like to leave it open for any comments from council. Alderman Rosick.
Hi, Tim, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. How are you?
Hey, good. Thanks for putting your name in, we appreciate it. Um, I, I have a question for you generally before we, um, either move to approve you or not, which is, there's been discussion at the police commission about moving forward with policies and procedures of the police commission itself, not of the police department, of the police commission. Is that something you're interested in doing and, and helping out as they move forward with that process?
Well, if you're asking me if I believe that policies and procedures is important, I would say yes. I'd have to take a look and see what the makeup of the committee is and what everybody's expertises are, but certainly I'd be willing to lend a hand however they need me.
Thank you.
Any comments you'd like to share with us, Tim?
I'm not prepared for comments. I just, uh, would like to say that I thank you for the opportunity, uh, to serve on the commission and I'm looking forward to, uh, providing a service to the community.
Any further comments from the council? I'd like to entertain, oh, Alderman, uh, Ro- uh, Rogers.
You're asking if I know personally the people that are currently in command structure, the, uh, yes, I do know them. He Fester and I think it's Captain Tim now, both, uh, both came in right as I was, uh, getting ready to leave to go teach at WCTC. Mark was, uh, Lieutenant Shrank, excuse me, was there, um, when I arrived. So yes, I do know those people, yes.
I'd like to entertain a motion. Kavieski, so moved.
Rosick, second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers. Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Welcome and thank you very much.
Thank you.
It looks like you're gonna have a busy summer, so we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And on to our next item of introductions. Uh, we have two introductions that we thought were valuable and kinda timely for what's going on with, um, fundraising and also a couple of the parks that are being developed. So we're gonna kick off with an introduction of the Build Rockwell Park Fundraising Group. Uh, Ms. Harrow.
Hello. Um, I had a PowerPoint. Do I pull that up?
It's there.
Oh, hello. Sweet. Thank you. And then I can click through, right? Who's my person?
Uh huh.
Okay. Hi, everyone. It's good seeing you all again. My name is Jane Harrow and I was a member of the original Build a Park at 517 team. We have regrouped, regrouped and rebranded as Build Rockwell Park. Thanks to over 1,000 generous donors, we were able to reach our goal of raising 1.35 million dollars to donate to the city of Oconomock to purchase 517 North Lake Road. And we are continuing our fundraising efforts to build Rockwell Park. Who are we? Um, if my park people could stand up quickly. Thank you. We are a determined group of dedicated, that was really quick. We are a determined group of dedicated Oconomock residents who understand the value of creating a park for the enjoyment of generations to come. And what do we do? Uh, we raise money for the park. We've been actively fundraising since April and are excited to share the current donation total with you. Twenty, I had, I had a lot of fun with PowerPoint. $21,502 and 30 cents is our current donation total. Um, how do we do that? We ask. Pretty simple. I hate to make it sound so simple, but a big part of our success is due to simply connecting with people and asking them for money. The fact that most of the times we ask were answered with a resounding yes makes it clear to me that our community is on board and excited about building Rockwell Park. We're also planning some great fundraising events that will be taking place later this summer. These events will keep people engaged, the message spreading, and most importantly, they'll be super fun. Uh, maybe a little bit less fun, but still important. We've been writing grant proposals to various foundations that we think align with our mission and we'll keep you all posted with any updates on that. One of the greatest parts of this whole journey has been connecting with our community members. There was overwhelming support for the purchase of the 517 property and I'm happy to say that this has not subsided. Many have donated, donated their time and energy thus far and we're looking forward to working with even more of them. One example, we're at the farmer's market through June. Um, we have community volunteers who help us staff the table, OHS, OHS students, excuse me, and Carla of the Oconomock Physical Therapy, um, have been a couple of our volunteers. You can follow us to stay updated on what we've been up to, donation totals, any upcoming events that we might be having. We have an Instagram and Facebook. They're still at Build a Park at 517, so some of you may already be following. And our website, Buildaparkat517.com. Lastly, uh, we want to sincerely thank you for all the time, thought, and effort that you've put into this project thus far. I know it would mean the world to me, our team, and countless community members to have the common council's support moving forward. We're excited to see the final design once it makes it through the voting process. And in the meantime, we'll keep doing our thing.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Harrow? Alderman Kavieski.
Yeah.
Appreciate everything you do and, um, in regards to your fundraising efforts, are they going into a community fund? Are they going into the other organization that's been created?
Yep. So that'll be explained next. Um, our fiscal sponsor is Friends of Oconomock Parks and Trails, so they'll be explaining a bit more of that. And then people are able to donate, um, their funds and on the check or in a memo on their online donation, they can earmark it for Rockwell Park.
Perfect. Good plug.
Alderman Mulder.
Uh, do you have a target that you're shooting for?
We don't have a target yet because there's not a set design yet. So right now, um, like at the farmer's market when people ask us what we're raising for, we are fairly sure that there are going to be two kayak launches on the property. So right now, that's a fun thing to say. A lot of people are paddlers when they come through, so right now, we're raising for the two kayak launches. And we're hoping that they'll be there.
So as a follow-up, is there a percent of the park you'd like to be able to fund? 25%, 50%? Can we come in here for 80%?
We'll keep going. I mean, we were, we're really good at raising money, as you could see from our first, you know, iteration of Build a Park at 517. The community is super excited. Um, you know, the more that we can get from larger donors is great, but there's been a great response and, you know, we're making more every week. And we just started back in April. Um, we took a little time to celebrate the win of purchasing the park.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah.
Thank you for, very much for sharing the story.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next item is the introduction of the nonprofit Friends of Oconomock Parks and Trails Incorporated.
Hello, good evening.
We'll get you started.
I, these microphones make me very nervous, so if I'm deafening you, please, please tell me. My big theater voice and microphones don't typically go well together. Hello, my name is Katie Miller. I am the secretary of the brand-new, uh, Friends of Oconomock Parks and Trails. I also happen to sit on the, um, Park and Recreation Board, so I'm serving a little bit of a dual purpose at the moment, but I'm excited to be here and thank you for your time tonight to learn a little bit about our organization and what we hope to achieve. Oops. So, to start, our mission is fairly straightforward. Um, our mission is really to work in partnership with the city of Oconomock and the surrounding municipalities as appropriate to conserve, protect, improve, and enhance area parks and trails for the benefit of the general public. We will support opportunities to educate the public about these resources and serve as a charitable conduit. The IRS does not like that word, but we use it anyway, charitable conduit, to provide financial support and a volunteer community to carry out the work of our organization. So, the Friends of the Parks really sort of started with the work to buy 517. So that effort sort of shined a light that there was this gap in our community's ability to quickly react to opportunities to improve our parks because we didn't have a nonprofit organization there to receive those funds and act as the financial sponsor. So the, the team working on 517 had this brainstorm, well, let's create one. There's a Friends of the Library group, there, you know, there's precedent for a group, um, designated to support city resources. So that's really our goal. So, we are, um, technically a 501(c)(3) status pending. Um, we have filed those papers with the IRS as of, uh, February the 12th. Hopefully, we'll hear back soon. They say it can take up to six months. In the meantime, we're acting on good faith that those, um, that our request to be recognized as an official nonprofit will be, um, approved. Then our primary role will be a means to improve city parks and trails, um, without additional taxpayer burden, um, and additional stress on city staff. So when the 517 effort took shape, the city stepped forward and, and became sort of the financial sponsor for that project, the fundraising project. And that donations funneled through the city's 501(c)(3) nonprofit status so that they would be tax exempt. So going forward, one of our roles will be not only to support the parks, that's our primary purpose, parks and trails. Secondarily, we will be able to act as that financial sponsor for other projects and efforts that might come up, like Build a Park, or potentially the skate park, or potentially any other park that might want to be developed at some point. We can serve as that financial sponsor to take burden off city staff. One thing I wanted to be sure to tell you and to be very clear about is that we do not act outside the purview of the Park and Rec Department and city leaders. We act in collaboration with and at the direction of, so we would never say, "We're gonna buy a bike rack for Fowler Park." That's, if someone asks us to buy a bike, a bike rack for Fowler Park, we will certainly consider that. It is not our responsibility nor do we want the burden of deciding what the parks need. We want to support what we're asked to support. So here's a list of our board of directors and all of our pretty pictures. Um, a few of us are here. Can we stand, our board members? We have Jane and Gina and Lisa, Craig. Craig is an ex officio. He is our link to all of you as well as to the Park and Recreation Board, um, and all of the great things going on within the Parks and Rec system, Park and Trail system. Um, so funding, right now, we're raising funds as we launch our membership campaign. We'll also be accepting donations. And then at some point in the future, I suspect there will be some sort of fundraising events and other sort of fundraising activities that will allow us to make investments in projects as requested. The secondary role, that financial sponsor role, that's really about designated funds. So as Jane talked about, um, if someone wants to make a contribution to five, to Build a Park, they can make the contribution to the Friends of the Parks. We hold those funds. We control those funds because we're a separate organization. And then when appropriate and requested, we turn around and give those funds back to support whatever they're building at any given time, whatever they want that to be. So the fiscal sponsorship, I've touched on a lot of this already. The important part is that our partners are under contract with us as a 501(c)(3), as a nonprofit. They will well understand that once the contributions come into our organization, that they're under our purview, right? So we need to make sure that anything those funds are being used for are meeting the needs as best we can and the intention of the donor. So if a donor makes a gift to support Build a Park, it is our responsibility as the keeper of those funds to make sure those funds are used to the best of our ability to support Build a Park. We can't say, "We're gonna use that for a dog park." That's not, that's not what we're aiming to do. Or what we're legally obligated to do. Our website, um, okonparksandtrails.org. And, imagine the possibilities. Um, we believe that our organization will help, um, improve our parks more quickly and, um, with more community involvement and with less cost and burden to the city. And we're aiming to grow membership and become a source of funds to actually, uh, support parks and make some real meaningful contributions. And to that end, um, I'm happy to announce that we have, uh, created our first contribution to support this skate park that I think you all will be hearing about a little later. Um, so the Friends of the Park is pleased to announce our first official gift of $1,000 toward the skate park to support the new Park in Oconomock.
That was a big check.
Well, we like big checks. There's nothing wrong with big checks.
Yeah.
Um, so I'd like to leave it open for council. Do you have any questions? Because this is a, a group that hopefully, if the world works wonderful in perpetuity, will bring value to the community on many, many things in the future. And as I saw the struggle, as we all saw the struggle with just trying to find a fiscal sponsor to buy the property, they wasted six weeks finding, trying to find that when they had a, a really tight deadline. So that was really the impetus of this group coming up with this concept and idea to move forward. So I think it's really gonna be of value to the entire community. But I wanna make sure council really understands its role, how it's set up, because this is also an avenue that you may have constituents that wanna build a dog park or wanna do something with their inner urban trail, or just a donor that wants to give a large amount of money for X, Y, or Z. This is a nice funding arm and we, as a council, we don't lose control of doing anything. It's just, uh, it's just truly a fiscal sponsor with a true mission and vision. Yes, Alderman?
I know that when we were looking at the skateboard park and also 517 for that matter, we were kind of, well, I was, kind of concerned on where the money was coming from and where it was gonna be parked before, um, it was, uh, um, designated to go where, where it needed to go. If, if I understand properly, this organization will be that parking vehicle?
Well put. Could've used you when we were putting this presentation together.
No. This group is, I can say from personal experience, both groups have really worked hard to give something that, you know, one, we have the park, we have a great skate park coming together. There are more things hopefully that can be done there as well. And as soon as we, they, all the pieces are in place, hopefully it'll be really valuable for everybody. So thank you so much. Alderman Rosick.
Yeah, I, all, good work, guys. I'm glad you're all putting this together. This was actually a question that I think me and Lou asked Craig when he started as Park and Rec Director, three years ago now? Yeah, maybe only two. But we asked him when he started if, if this is something that he would help push as a Park and Rec Director, as the public-private partnership and fundraising arms and it's things that we're encouraging other, departments to do in the city. Um, we, we have a generous community. When there's a need, sometimes that need shouldn't always just be transferred to the tax levy. Um, sometimes there are people that are interested in specific projects and whether it's the police department or the library, or in this case, Park and Rec, I think those funding arms and those funding opportunities are there. And, uh, I appreciate you pushing forward with this concept, so.
You know, it's a great partnership. Obviously, it takes a lot of people, so it's not just me. So I wanna thank them, but it's, it's worked for me in the past in different places. It can be very strong. Please give a little patience towards it. Takes a little while to get going. These guys are gung ho. They're already out promoting, uh, applications and memberships. You'll see them out on the Village Green, the Boardwalk soon and around town. So please support them. Uh, you'll have a chance this year to become a charter member. Were you gonna mention that? Okay. I guess she's not done. Yes. But no, it's, it's gonna be a great way to support Parks and Trails. It's not gonna supplement everything, but it's certainly a great way to, we talked about a few things like the dog parks, pickleball groups entrusted, splash pads, whatever those active items are. It's a perfect way to kinda connect with them. So thank you.
Any further questions from council? Comments? Thank you very much, Katie.
Thank you.
Great. On to our next agenda item, which are comments and suggestions, uh, from, uh, citizens. We have two cards right now and if anybody else would like to make a comment, uh, please fill out a blue card fairly quickly. Uh, when you come to the podium, we ask that you limit it to three minutes or less. Um, and then state your name and your address. Chris Kavieski.
Uh, Chris Kavieski, 1339 Goldfinch. Um, it's my understanding that the mayor's ordered the lowering of the Thin Blue Line flag that has come to represent law enforcement during National Police Week. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays a special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. Let me tell you what the Thin Blue Line flag means to me. I will use this analogy to humanize it, to demonstrate the disrespect and idiocy that lowering the flag demonstrates. If the flag were a picture, it'd be pixelated. If you look closer, you would see the faces of the individuals of law enforcement. Those individuals are members of our community. You probably know some. You are probably friends with some. In fact, one of my friends was recently shot in the line of duty seven months ago and he lives in this community. They're fathers, mothers, brothers, and sisters. They wake up every morning to go to work, just like the rest of us. However, they go to work every morning with a, a better chance than most of not coming home. They do this for the betterment of our community and country. Without them, there's chaos and anarchy. They are the people you call when others come to harm you and you are scared. They keep us safe. To order the lowering of the flag is, at all, is a slap in the face of all the pixels of that flag, no matter what time of year you do it. But to do it during the memorial week in which those that lost their lives protecting you is a despicable action that can only come from a weak leader who bends to the minority with questionable grievances. I demand that you raise the flag. I recommend that the city of police, of Oconomock Police Force take a vote of no confidence in the mayor. And I hope that enough people find out about this reprehensible display of character and leadership by our mayor, that you not only lose the next election, but are humiliated by the results. You have exposed yourself as a weak-kneed Marxist liberal in a community that, uh, has no use for it.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Lynn Wright.
Lynn Wright, 707 Marigold Street. I had no idea. Thank you. Okay. All right, so I, what I came here to talk about, um, getting sidetracked a little bit because I didn't know about the park meeting, so I just wanna make a couple of comments. Number one, not everybody, like me, works regular nine-to-five hours. Not everybody is available in the evening to come to meetings. Though, that meeting next Monday on the 24th, from 5:30 to 7:30 on the park, that is such a huge financial commitment, okay? Um, not just from the fundraisers, but from all the taxpayers. A lot of you wouldn't do the chicken organs because of, until you had a clear majority, okay? So how are you gonna prove a clear majority for a multimillion-dollar commitment without, why aren't things taken for a vote at an election to approve things? Like the police station, okay? They're, not that it's not needed, but you, there's no other way to know you have a majority unless you take it to the vote, voters, okay? So I'm asking that there's a, be another meeting, not just that meeting next Monday, because I cannot attend. I work and I just found out about it. So there needs to be a lot more advance notice to these things than a week before. You know, my schedule's planned a month ahead of time at where I work, okay? All right? So that brings up term limits, okay? So I don't think there's anybody on the council or anybody in this room. I think it's a nonpartisan issue about term limits for every span of government, not just the president, not just our congressman, not just our state senators, our state assembly. But why don't Oconomock start a trend and vote yourselves term limits? Because I was taught in civics class in school that you're a public, you're elected public servant, not elected public official, elected public servant to serve we, the people, okay? I was taught that you came to give back after you had a career, all right? So I think whether it's two, I don't know whether they're two-year terms, I'm proposing six years, okay? And because people don't run, like there's four of you who just ran unopposed. So you didn't have to campaign on anything. You didn't have to prove yourselves. And don't tell me that the majority of the community knows. I talk to the majority of the community and they don't know what's going on unless I tell them, okay? All right. So as you all know, I'm very vocal in the community, okay? So, um, so, and it costs money. So, start a trend. Vote. I mean, you want congressmen to vote themselves term limits? Why don't you guys vote yourselves term limits? Mr., um, attorney, is there any reasons that they can't?
Yeah, they could, but then the next common council could reverse it, the next meeting.
Well, you know, sometimes you start and that's just what happens. No, you can have back and forth.
No, no, you can't.
You can have back and forth, Mayor Magnus. It is permitted. It's you choose not to. It's you choose not to. The school board allows back and forth, just so you know that, okay? All right. So, um, I'm gonna end on that. Oh, and is there any reason that, um, committee meetings cannot be taped? Because you guys talk about so much stuff in those committee meetings that doesn't get talked about, so the public doesn't know about it. Why can't those be videotaped and recorded? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, we'll move on to consent agenda items. Um, A and B, entertain a motion.
So moved. Second. Zaffel.
Discussion? I, um, I don't have any more, uh, cards. Did I miss somebody? I'm happy to go back. I did not receive the other request. Happy to entertain it. Could I have the card, please?
Excuse me, we're gonna go back. I'm not doing anything but just put this down.
Thank you. If you could come to the podium, please. And if anyone else, um, wants to make a comment, we need to know before we move on, so please let us know in the future. Ms. Owen.
Good evening, everyone, and especially to the audience, my fellow community members. Some of you, it's the first time I've seen. Welcome. My family's been here over 150 years, so it's, it's a pleasure to meet you all. My comments about the Rockwell Park. I am so grateful that we saved it from becoming another condo for tax base. I am so grateful that we saved it from becoming another condo for tax base. I can't thank everybody enough, who participated, who donated, who gave their time. However, to me, that house is part of my family and the community. I'm sure my grandparents did business with the Rockwell family and their generations afterward. The original plan, and it's still out on the media, was save 517, not demolish it. There's no reason to demolish that house. First of all, it's historical. Secondly, it's tax base. Just that lot, tax base alone, is over $15,600 per year. So now we're looking at projecting about $18,000 to demolish it. Losing the tax base. We could have kept the renters in there, who were great people. We don't even know what the rent was. That wasn't transparently made public. We could use it for a museum that's functioning and open. We could use it as a timeshare and make plenty of money off of it. I don't feel it was fairly transparently forthright out to all of the public stakeholders, whether you reside in the city, whether you own property in the city, whether you own a business in the city, to have an open survey on what they want to do with the park. This is our history. This is our town. This is why so many of you came to our town. And this is your last chance before you approve the money to demolish it. We're never going to get a chance at a house like this again. It's one time. So take it to referendum. Let the city decide. Let the people decide, who pay for this. Who are paying your $20 million city deficit. Who are paying your $80 million school board deficit, so that this community is about $100 million in debt. We're not going to pay it off, the people you see in this room. Our kids aren't going to get to pay it off. We are mortgaging out and plotting out the future of our grandchildren to pay off $100 million in debt. Yes, we refinanced it. We still have a long, long ways to go. So I encourage you to make a choice. I've spoken with three different people sitting on the horn, as you call it, council members, in the last week on how to do a referendum. None of them know how to do it. Actually, four. So I'm starting to self-teach, because that's the best way to do it. Let's take care of our people, because they are what built this town. They are what developed everything to bring you here. I'm glad you're here. We took care of you. Now it's your turn to take care of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to consent agenda items. We're just going to start fresh. If we could have the same folks make a motion in second, please.
Second, Zaffle.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffle.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Onto committee reports. Protection and Welfare Consider Act on Resolution 21-R2952, granting new Class B fermented malt beverage and Class C wine licenses to Gus and J.S. Incorporated. It's the Lake House Cafe. Like to entertain a motion?
So moved, Rozick.
Mulder, second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Alderman Rozick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffle.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Onto Public Services. Consider Act on Resolution 21-R2955 for the demolition of the house structure at 517 North Lake Road. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. Item before you tonight, process started when the community went out and raised 1.35 million to make 517 into a park. The common council, through the generous donation, also obtained the parcel at 525, and they've been combined together. Our process all along has been to free up this area to make it an open-air park. In order to do that, we have to remove the house. We had two parallel paths going. One, we were soliciting people to purchase and move the house. We had two very interested parties that worked diligently to try and make that happen. At the end of the day, financially, it just wasn't feasible to do that. And talking to the one, the cost far outweighed the value of the property once they would have it moved. So we then opened up bids for the raising of the structure. Four bids were received. Little bid was Gillick, and they have done work for the city before, and we are recommending them for this process and ask the contract to be awarded in the amount of $18,700... I'm sorry, it's a different number. $18,780 with a 10% contingency.
Alderman Zaffle.
Thank you, Mayor. In committee, Attorney Riffel stipulated that we don't need to do a budget amendment, correct?
Yes, correct.
And if this were approved tonight, and there is asbestos found, this project would not move forward, correct?
So we've... They've come and taken the samples. Once they're tested and they provide an estimated cost to remove that asbestos, we will look at that to see if it fits, where it fits within our purchasing policy that we have. So if that number comes in at only a few thousand dollars, or 10 or below, I would move forward with hiring company to take care of that. If it's above that number, we have to come back to the common council.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Trebatowski.
Just to kind of address the issue where I think there's some reservation, and I think it would be possible to... If the council could approve the demolition contract contingent on the asbestos results, would that be... I believe that would be possible. I'm just checking with the city attorney.
I guess the motion would be, so long as the asbestos number comes within the purchasing policy, you approve this. Otherwise, it must come back to council.
It's not $10,000, it's 10%, isn't it?
No, no.
A number under 25.
It's two different things. We have departmental policy. The 10% is if the contract that we issue goes out, and they have change orders for more than 10%, that has to come back to council.
So he gets an extra $10,000 on top of the 18 if we approve it that way?
It more than likely would be a separate company.
Yeah.
That would do this.
Right.
Alderman Kavieski.
In committee meeting, we didn't see a need to rush into this. I think it's kind of interesting. We didn't necessarily commit to an open-air park at 517. And maybe that house is converted into a historical... A place where history could be celebrated within our community. And if we do demolish it, it's not been one of the options even discussed. But if we demolish it, that no longer is even an opportunity. I don't think there is a need to rush prior to the asbestos being considered. I think there's going to be a couple of meetings associated with the design elements. Maybe that comes up in conversation. I'd like to see what does come up in conversation, if that sparks something. So I'm not going to be supporting this today. But maybe based on the community input and final analysis of what cost is actually going to be, then I'll support it.
Alderman Mulder.
I think there has been community input. There's been surveys, and no one suggested that we keep the house, that I've seen. Doesn't mean it couldn't. But I don't think anybody that donated to that... I won't speak for everybody. I think the majority of the people that donated to that saw a park there, not the house being preserved, rented out, or turned into something. Perhaps I'm wrong. I think that to change this, to specify that we require Mark to just do his job and not spend more than $10,000 is disrespectful to him. He knows his job. He knows what he can spend on this, and he knows that he has $10,000 on asbestos abatement under a separate purchase that is fully within his rights and job to do that. And for us to go ahead and make an amendment to that is nothing but being punitive, and I think just wholly wrong. I know there was discussion about the $150,000 before and what that was meant for, what it was earmarked for. It was... I don't recall the exact wording that is in the budget, and I should. That's my bad. My mind all along was that that was money that would be spent towards the improvement of the property, whether that was one property or two properties. Not that it was specifically meant to move Rock A from point one to point two. And so I'm interested to learn. I know that a couple of you have expressed concern about how we're spending that $150,000. What I would like to know is what... How would you... What is your interpretation of how that money should be spent, if not on a project like this? Because we've brought it up a number of times, and I just don't understand, and I feel like I'm really missing something.
Alderman Rogers.
I just... To the $150,000, you're right. We were told X. And I... That's why I'm voting no on anything I can with it, because I don't understand where the defined line is. And if I don't understand it, I vote no. Because I'm not going to agree to something that I don't understand. I can't do that.
Is there something we can help you understand? Is there something... Can you...
The $150,000, my understanding is, is supposed to be used for shoreline and dam stuff, not bulldozing a house. So if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong. Help me understand. And I feel like maybe Alderman Mulder is just wanting some definition as well so we can make educated decisions. It's only 18 grand. I understand that. I get that. It shouldn't be as big a deal as it is, but if I don't have good understanding, I can't just... As far as the asbestos goes, Mark's going to do his job. He's not going to put his ass on the line over... He's going to do the right thing. I have to believe that, right? I mean, I... It is what it is. I get that. I just... I don't want to make this bigger than it is, and it's already gotten there. And that's my hard struggle with this situation. Is 517 and 525, is that two parks? Or is this one now?
It's one. You've combined it by... This council has combined it by certified survey map.
So therefore, does it mean the $150,000 can just be used how we want?
That's what you... That's what we're saying.
Absolutely.
Okay. So that's why I'm asking.
Right.
I just want to confirm that. So if we spend 20 grand on bulldozing a house...
If you don't want to use it in this fashion, then that's your privy.
I just don't want to undermine what the original want of 525 was for and the money allocated. If we're not doing that in good faith and trust and character, I can certainly move forward a lot easier.
Well, and also to add, not only was it the shoreline, but it was also the portage. The portage was included as well.
Yes, right.
And the fundraising groups already raised 20 grand for the portage.
Sure.
So, you know, it's hard... It's up to you guys. It's up to what you want to do and how you want to process it. That's why I spent a lot of time last week going through is, should this be a budget amendment? Yes or no? What's the best way to do it? And then to be transparent, so you know exactly what we're doing and where the money's going to. And I believe that we've done that. But it's really up to you as to whether you want to spend the money and move this forward, or you want to slow the process down. And, you know, that's your call. Alderman Rozick, and Alderman Ellis.
Sure. One question. On the park, did we ever do an... I thought we did at one point an RFP or something for someone to move the house, or there was... Correct. There was no bids, so...
There were two very interested parties that spent a lot of time and effort to try and put together all their costs in order to be able to move that structure.
Right.
And at the end of the day, the value, the cost to move it exceeded the value of it.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, so there you have it. And the community knew that we were building a park. So I don't have a problem with it being a park or the house getting ripped down. I mean, things get ripped down all the time. That's the way it goes. If we rip down the house... One question, just procedurally. If, depending upon the plan we choose, we leave the garage or don't leave the garage? So I guess it does seem like there's a missing part. I'm still going to probably vote for this tonight. But if we approve Plan 1, I think there is a garage. Plan 2 didn't have a garage. Shouldn't we be doing that together? And that's why maybe we wait just a while, so that we know with this one bid, we're going to rip down the house and the garage, and it's all gone. Versus now, we rip down the house next week. Now we do five grand for asbestos abatement. You know, you approve that, that's fine. But then, a month from now, we approve Project 1 that says, "Leave the project," or, you know what? Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, I don't want to pay for demolition on the house when we could combine that with demolition of the garage if we don't want to keep the garage, which is why I do think this is a tad bit premature. So I'm not trying to throw, you know, a fly in that ointment. But, you know...
The goal and the objective to move it forward is to have a green space that the community can enjoy this summer.
Right.
And if we decide not to do that, that's your choice. Also, by postponing it, as one of our aldermen has pointed out, it's a liability having it sit there. Nobody's in it, nothing's going on. And so I'll use Alderman Kavieski's comment, that it's a liability. And I strongly agree with him. And so now what we're trying to do is put something in front of you that says, "The only thing we're trying to do is open this up so it can be used. They can have the portage for the summer until everything is designed and planned." You make a good point, though, Alderman Rozick, with regard to that other building. And that's something that may not even be decided for in a year.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody wants to cut it down until they really know, so...
But we're leaving the garage for now?
The garage is in good shape.
It's in good shape.
And so to just tear it down, to tear it down, would not be a wise move right now. Let's get the plans figured. Because one of the things that, if we do end up with planted areas, the people that are going to come and take care of that need a place to store supplies. You know, this building could have other issues. We might decide on the plan on June 15th that that garage is gone. Quite frankly, any work that we do up there, the garage is small enough. Our crews can take it down. We don't have to bring in another contractor to do that.
And I think we all recognize from our closed session, which was a unanimous vote, that we stated exactly how much tax revenue we were going to lose. I stated that. Secondly, we had no plan for what it was going to look like. We had absolutely no plan for funding it. Now you have a community that's raised over $2 million to do this and are willing to raise more money so we can keep our taxes low. I mean, that's the key. I'm not a left-sided Marxist, so that was pretty offensive, just as a commenter. But what we want to do is keep our taxes low, and we want to have good business development. But here we have an opportunity, and we have a lot of momentum. And so if you want to wait on something, that's perfectly your privilege, but it does have consequences for the community.
And I'm not saying I want to...
In trying to raise the money from the community, who's been so engaged. It would be a shame, but it is your option. Alderman... I'm sorry, Alderman Ellis hasn't spoke. Sorry.
Originally, if I recall, this whole 517 came about because we had a builder that came in and said that they wanted to redevelop that area and put a condo there. The community at that point in time went up in arms. And the question that needed to be answered was, what can we do about it? After deliberating for quite a number of weeks, it was brought to the table that, why don't we, as the community, purchase that property? And that's after going through the court system, as a matter of fact, if I recall. At that point, my understanding was, save 517 was saving a portion of it for a park, and then also not taking out the house. I could be wrong. This is a dilemma. Because I want to get this right the first time. And I think the move that we make is going to be one that's going to last forever. So I... So I, I'm kind of confused here. The money that was raised, I don't know if.
They left unfortunately, but on their.
The money that was raised, they raised over $2 million to purchase the property?
Yeah.
And the additional 50,000 went to design it?
Can I ask, can I ask the question, please?
Sure.
I appreciate it, thank you. The money that was raised, and I don't care if anybody can answer it out there, I'd appreciate it, what was the purpose of it? What was the purpose of the money besides yourself?
Can I go get the rendering?
You see, and this is what really concerns me here, is the fact of the matter here is that I have questions that, you know, it's, it's, it's the taxpayers' money, you've brought it to a vote. We want to make the right decision. So you speak your piece and then you leave. And then we have to make a decision upon the information that we have. And we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't. And that concerns me. It concerns me an awful lot. I also thought about a referendum in the sense that we go out to the citizens, if that's at all possible. I don't know if that's at all possible, only the attorney can answer that question for me. So I'm, I'm really confused at this point. I don't know how this got so difficult, I just don't.
Alderman Mulder?
Help me, please, help me understand.
Well, I'm just going to point out that the committee to save 517, to build a park at 517, had a rendering done on their behalf that very clearly showed a park with trails, a passive park with some activity, not a swing set or anything like that. But there was clearly no house in that, so I would say that, being that that board put together that drawing, it was their intention to not have a house on that property.
So there was a board and that board put a rendering together?
Had a drawing that was out on their website that showed a park, similar to what we've seen here, without, clearly without the house, though.
Okay, thank you, that helps me out an awful lot.
Alderman Kavieski.
Again, this project can be absolutely fantastic, outstanding for the community. It is a great piece of property that has incredible views of both of our biggest natural assets, which are Fowler and Lachla Bell. This project started out as an individual project and donation by the Harrow family for $600,000 at the 525 North Lake Drive. As a result of the mayor negotiating with the developer, the opportunity came about to have the community raise $1.35 million, which was what the developer agreed to take and dedicate that property back to the city for a park. At which point, the community did that in January. It went through the process of the CSM combining both properties to one and initiating a unified park as opposed to one park at 525, which was the Harrows' donation to the city. To two pieces of property combined for one park. So, is that a correct summary?
Yes, sir.
So, this wasn't an effort of the community to raise over $2 million, we had a gift from a family within the community of 600,000, valued at about $600,000, which resulted in the 525 property being dedicated to the city and the opportunity for the community to move forward with a larger project. That's how that came about, I have no problem with that at all. If we do it, we're going to do it well, we're going to do it right, we're going to do it in the best interest, short term and long term of the community. As of that, again, I just, I'm going to be a nay on this because I want to know the right thing to do at that point. You're going to do, you do a great job, you do a fantastic job. Whatever you're set to do, you do it well. If you raise that piece of property, that house, and it gets filled in, maybe there is a version that is going to need another two or three feet of fill there to create that front porch. I don't know, is it going to be more cost effective to do it all at once? I would think so. So, again, there's meetings coming up, there's going to be some more direction. I think that we should be able to consider in the next meeting, I don't think it'll necessarily destroy the opportunity for the community to enjoy it over the course of the summer. If we postpone it until next meeting and that information is brought forward, but that's my take on it.
Mr. Frye, do we have to go and resubmit an RFP then?
I'd have to verify with the low bidder if they would hold their bid. It's been over the 60-day timeframe that's in the bid document. They had indicated they were fine when I told them I was coming to this meeting for action.
And realizing the final park design, you guys, it's going to take months to do all the detail work. All we're looking at is trying to create a green space, which is what the community has asked us to do. So, if we do that or have to go through an RFP, I would argue it won't be available for that because it's not going to be safe for the community for the summer. And if that's what you decide, that's fine. But we want to just be all aligned so that we can do things right and we can allocate our city resources appropriately. So I, I'm sorry, I had Alderman Spiegelberg.
I think in a perfect world, we would have been able to sell this house and move it, and that was our intention always from the start. When that didn't happen, that leaves two options, do we leave the house and repurpose it in some way? We could, but more citizens have spoken to the effect that they would like this to be green space. And I think that we are also going to be recognizing that site, is that correct, obviously, Rockwell Park, as the first home built, that, the home that's there isn't the first one built, part of the foundation might be, but that's, that's about it.
And we did a search, Mr. Duffy did a search, it's not part of the historical record. So we did all of our due diligence to make sure we weren't doing anything inappropriate. And part of the reason it's kind of got shoved down into this month is we were trying to be as kind as we could to the landowners. And the land, or not, excuse me, the renters, the tenants, because we were trying to help to make sure they had a good transition to move. And we were very generous in how we treated them. And that was the right thing to do. But now we have a vacant building, just like we have a vacant building at the, in Olympia with a theater that we own. And so when you look at those as risk factors, I think those risks are very high. When you have somebody that lives in there, I'm not as concerned, but I'm very concerned when they're empty. And so, I think you need to look at all of those different pieces and say, what would you like to direct Mark to do or not to do? Do you want to postpone it, yes, do you not? Then we will adjust, the city will adjust and we'll keep moving it forward the way you as council would like it to move forward. But if there are any questions or things that aren't clear, that's why we're having the discussion today. Alderman Mulder?
I heard you, Lou, that in a couple of weeks you might be ready, if, what, what question for you? What would you hope to know in two weeks? And then Mark, can you respond if we would know that in two weeks, so we?
Sure. So what I'd hope to know in two weeks is what the result of the meeting coming up is with the design review with the community. Is there a specific direction, does that impact that area where the house is? And does that allow for more efficient backfill or whatever that would be? And what is the status of the asbestos? Those two elements to me are what I'd look for. And I'd, and if that house does stand for another two weeks until we let the contract, is that, and I agree, there is a safety element with that. And again, I'm not saying that indefinitely it should stand, but if it stands for another two weeks, is that a risk that is tolerable? There, the 525 property is available if somebody wants to use it, as of right now, I don't believe it's blocked off, is it?
No, it's blocked off, it's not safe.
Okay. But property improvement could occur there at some point that'll allow that piece of property.
Yeah, and I think the big picture is that we want to try to do things once, keep it as cost effective as possible.
That's the key.
And, you know, that's the one thing, and really, they're just trying to create green space. I'd miss Alderman Rogers, Alderman Rogers.
Sure. So if the garage stays, it's just, this is probably pretty simple. I feel like we should have a hot dog warmer and maybe three beer tappers in there, is that reasonable?
I thought beer tappers had to be in even numbers.
Okay, six. Ultimately, conversation is what it is, people have their own passions and opinions. I'll make this less than three minutes. I just wanted to reiterate that, yes, it's one park, yes, this money's been allocated. As long as the original family that bought their part is good with where this is moving forward, I'm for doing this, that's not it. I trust that the asbestos part is going to be what it is, and if it comes back, like I would do to a customer at an astronomical number, you're going to go, hold on, we need to talk about this. I get that. That's all I got, I feel like, yes, maybe some of this could slow down at some degree because I feel like it's moving fairly quick. But we still have a house to deal with and ultimately, it is one property. The money that's allocated for shoreline and dam and that, if the fam, it has to move forward. And with this discussion with everybody's yays and nays and different opinions, I don't know that we're in a wrong place, I think we need to just move on. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Hot dog warmer, six beer tappers, it's fine, one Bush Light, whatever you guys want, I'm good.
No.
Diet Pepsi.
Any further discussions? Alderman Mulder?
We don't have a motion yet, we've been doing all the discussions on a motion, so I'll move to approve the demolition of the house at the, at the amount of the low bid with the 10% contingency.
So moves Zappel.
Any further discussion?
Second, sorry.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Nay.
Alderman Rogers?
Aye.
Alderman Rozak?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Thank you all, let's move on to our next item, Consider Act on Resolution 21-R2956 for the added cost for code required trench drain sump structures, exciting.
In my world it is, sir. So, at our public works building, we have a trench drain that goes down through the middle of the area where we park all of our trucks. It's original to the building from the 70s, it's deteriorated, we've filled in most of it. So, we put out proposals last year, we had $50,000 at our maintenance budget earmarked for the replacement of the trench drain. We got the proposals at the end of the year, because of the fact that we'd have to leave the trucks outside all the time, they did the work. We wanted to wait until after the snow plowing season. So we issued a purchase order in the amount of $35,499 to do this work. They came in, they got the new trench drain in the floor and we found out that, you know, what they referred to as their sumps, which allows settlement of the solid heavy material, were only 15 inches deep and they needed to be 30 inches deep. So these sumps are a 36-inch concrete manhole structure, 30 inches deep, that'll have the heavy castings like what we have in the streets outside because they'll be pouring in other agents of the concrete around those. So those need to be replaced. Because of the fact that we did not carry forward the 50,000 from the budget, we only carried forward the purchase order amount and that was all discussed amongst the department when we were doing that carryover, we're now here today to say that we need these funds. You know, one of the things, as we've gone through our multiple years of tighten your belt budgets, we don't have an extra 13,000 just sitting in that account this year to be able to use that. So that's why I'm before you tonight requesting a budget amendment for the $13,326 cost of the sump structures.
Like to entertain a motion?
Moves Zappel.
Second, Rozak.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Rogers?
Aye.
Alderman Rozak?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Next up in utilities, Consider Act on Joining the National Rural Water Lawsuit Regarding PFAS and Authorized Signature of the Retainer Agreement. Mr. Freiber.
Before you tonight is City of Oconomwax, wastewater and water, are members of the Wisconsin Rural Water Association. We met probably a month and a half, two months ago regarding joining the National Water, National Rural Water Association's lawsuits on PFAS with attorney firms of Napoli.
Don't look at me.
LLC.
I can't pronounce it either.
Right now, there's 18 communities in the state of Wisconsin that are part of this. This law firm that I can't pronounce basically has right now 250 members or community members that are part of this lawsuit. There's another group of lawyers that are doing another lawsuit. Basically, it's anytime that a manufacturer had made PFAS, the manufacturers are the ones that they're looking to do the lawsuit against. This will be basically a way for us to collect money if we do find out that we have PFAS either in our wastewater or water for some reason in the future. So it's basically an income, if the lawsuit is unsuccessful, we do not owe any money for the attorneys or for any disbursements. So it's basically a win-win for the community.
Open conversation, Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, Matt asked me a while back on some of these where we can give a report from the committee, we can't, we should. PFAS, as you know, are these basically forever chemicals. We looked at all these issues, I asked Kevin to look into this and city attorney looked at the agreement. Because I was worried about the disbursement and cost issue if we were unsuccessful. They have cleared that up and I'm comfortable with where they're at, so, which is pretty good because usually you pay costs sometimes. And it's, I think it's Napoli, it's Napoli Shilock, Shilink.
Thank you.
I think we should enter it, though, it's a good, it could be found money, it probably won't be a lot, but it could be something.
Any further questions? Comments?
Move to approve joining the National Rural Water Lawsuit Regarding PFAS?
Second. Shell Pepper?
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Rogers?
Aye.
Alderman Rozak?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Next up, Consider Resolution 21-R2949 Awarding Construction Management Services for 2021 Digestor Improvement Project. Mr. Freiber.
The waste management plan put an RFP out for construction services to take and do the inspection services of the Digestor Improvement Project. We sent the RFP out to seven firms, we had four additional firms that requested the RFP. We received two proposals back from the, from engineers. Those two engineers were Rooker Milkie and Strand and Associates, they were within four points total in the technical session. And after we included the costs into it, Rooker Milkie is the one we're basically asking you guys to take in support in the cost will be $192,149 with a 10% contingency of $19,214.90 for a total cost of $211,363.90. This will have to be a budget amendment. In 2020, I had expected this project was going to start, but of course, because of COVID, everything got put off and I did not carry over, asked to carry over the money for the actual construction management. So we'll need a, it'll be a budget amendment.
Any questions for Mr. Freiber? Alderman Kavieski?
So this will come out of contingency funds as a?
For availability fund for wastewater.
Yep.
And there's plenty of funds here.
Yep.
Like to entertain, oh, Alderman Ellis?
Is there a not to exceed clause with this?
Yes.
Because in the, well, I won't go.
It is not to exceed, but it does have the 10% contingency of something that's added on because of something that got added into the project.
This is a good number, guys, I mean, they came in $70,000 less than.
Yeah.
So this is, this is good than the other group, so.
Like to consider a motion?
So moved, Kavieski.
Second, Zappel.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Rogers?
Aye.
Alderman Rozak?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
And to Consider Resolution for Awarding the Construction Administration and Drilling Observation Services for Well Number Eight.
Yeah, thank you, we talked about this earlier in Utility Committee. Before you is the Construction Administration and Drilling Observation Services contract. We followed the city's QBS process, we put it out multiple websites and in the newspaper. We had three requests for the information, we were able to obtain one bid from Collier Consultants. Actually, the staff that at Collier has been part of our well sighting process for about the last 15 years at different companies, but the two hydrogeologists have been part of that. With that, we're asking for recommendation, combination of amending the design construction, the design professional services for Strand Associates, increasing their contract by $14,900 and then also approving the bid for Collier at $64,980. We would add 10% contingencies for a total of $87,868. It is within budget. Correct.
Like to entertain a motion?
So move Kavieski.
Second, Spiegelberg.
Any further discussion or questions? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Rogers?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Zaffal?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Uh, next up on the plan commission, consider act on certified survey map dividing one parcel into two located at 614 North Oakwood Avenue. Uh, Mr. Gallo.
Thank you. Tonight, we have two certified survey maps on the agenda. Uh, letter A is the Oakwood Avenue Certified Survey Map. It's in the city. It's on the corner of Oakwood and Wilson. They're dividing one lot into two. There's an existing house on that lot that is to remain on the property. So even though there's two lots, there's going to be one new buildable lot. That house will remain. Um, plan commission did review this back on May 5th, and they recommended approval of the CSM.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved Ellis?
Alder, second.
Any further discussions or questions for Mr. Gallo? Alderman Shellpepper?
Just what's the standard that we operate off of when we're subdividing these lots in neighborhoods that have existed for decades? What kind of standard or expectation do residents have that live in these older neighborhoods to have expectation that new lot lines are not going to be drawn, subdivided around them? And I bring this up kind of because it's close to home. Um, not this specific item, but before I came on council, this council approved a land division. Um, in, in, close by my neighborhood, we ended up with a massive mansion that sticks out like a sore thumb. Everybody hates it, doesn't understand why it was allowed to happen in a neighborhood that had existed for at least, you know, 40 years. Um, why do we do this?
Well, we have zoning, and zoning is the, the rules. It's this property is zone TR, traditional residential, and in that zoning district, there's certain requirements that have to be met. If a landowner has the ability of taking, maybe once was a double lot and dividing it into two, uh, to be compatible with the adjacent lot sizes, uh, they're allowed to do that. There's a lot across the street that is smaller than the one being created. This isn't going to create a, a smaller lot, but it does conform to the underlying, uh, TR zoning district requirements.
And from, um, a legal perspective, you know, folks have property rights, and if it fits all of the requirements, uh, and you, as a city, refuse to do something that they're allowed to do under your statutes, um, it could be viewed as a taking, and the city could be sued for, um, inverse condemnation. So you have to be very, very careful. That's why, um, you know, getting zoning right in the first place is really the way to control land use. Um, so I, I agree with your planner 100%.
So pretty much any residential TR can be subdivided regardless of?
No, not at all. No. You, there's a minimum lot size in this TR district?
What's the minimum?
I don't know.
50 feet minimum width, and then you have to maintain side yard setbacks of seven feet. So, you know, that person would have to have a minimum of 57 feet in order to divide it, uh, because they have to maintain seven feet from the, from the existing structure, and then another 50 feet of beyond that, so.
And there's a minimum acreage, right? Uh, square feet?
No, we actually don't have a minimum lot size in the TR zoning district.
And so, and so this lot is double, you're saying, basically?
It may have been a double lot, uh, when it was initially platted.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Right.
Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, it's been a long time since those were subdivided.
Call roll.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Rogers?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Zaffal?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Onto item 9B, consider act on extraterritorial certified survey map reconfiguring the lot located at North 67 West 34981 Ireland Court, Town of Oconomowoc.
This, uh, second certified survey map is in the town of Oconomowoc, but it does fall within the city's extraterritorial, uh, plating jurisdictional area. It is on Ireland Court. No new lots are being created. This is a land configuration. They're just shifting a lot line a little bit. We have an owner of a residential home that planted some trees that, um, inadvertently were there offsite, and now the owner is doing some subdividing of the adjacent property, and they would like to, to move that, that land onto his property so he could maintain ownership of the trees. Um, it's only about a tenth of an acre is what's being shifted over. So it's a small amount of land. Uh, plan commission did review this, and they recommended approval back on May 5th.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moves Zaffal.
Rosick, second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Rogers?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Zaffal?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Okay, on to, uh, new business. Now something exciting. Um, approving phase two construction contract for the Oconomowoc Skate Park. That's a consider act resolution 21 dash R294. Mr. Hupner?
Did we lose our projector? They don't let me use this kind of tools around here. Thank you, Laurie. No one will ever know. Okay. Uh, back on March 2nd, the common council approved hiring Evergreen Skate Parks to design and build our skate park. And at that time, they also approved, uh, phase one, which is our design portion, in the amount of $16,500. Since then, our skate park committee has worked cooperatively with Evergreen to develop what we call a draft concept plan. We then took that to the community. On April 15th, we held a public input session at the high school and had a great attendance and incorporated a number of, um, ideas, comments, and feedback into the design. So what you see before you is the actual, uh, final conceptual design. Um, and I'm going to walk through parts of it if you can see it. Um, but before that, I want to mention that the contract with Evergreen is for a not to exceed price of $325,000. Um, and what it will include, if you can follow my cursor, uh, first off, this area on the right side of the screen, it looks kind of like almost a spaceship, is about 9,000 square feet of brand-new skate park. Uh, the cool people call this transition. I don't know the difference, but this is transition. So this is a bowl in the middle, um, going down to a depth of six feet. There's a lot of hips and curves and radius through here. There'll be a little transition piece. Up to this on the left is our actual original concrete pad that currently stands. This is what they call street. So streetscape. And there's more of the rails and little boxes and some smaller little humps. Um, so basically, a brand-new 9,000 skate park plus 4,000 square foot refurbish for 13,000 square feet, which I think is pretty unheard of for what we're doing. So we're pretty excited about that. So I want to be very clear that this contract handles the main skate park, which is the refurbished 4,000 square feet and the brand-new 9,000 square feet. In addition, the skate park committee's been hard at work raising additional funds and are still continuing to fundraise to do, add on a few other very important pieces. So one is this piece here, which we're calling our shade structure. Obviously, besides the nice oak tree and a little bit of trees on the south part, we don't have shade. This is wide open. So having a little pavilion, a little seating area with shades is very important. So that's a piece, a new component or an additional component. We also have some seating area underneath the tree. We're going to use that shade area, uh, for people to come. And then one of the really cool and new ideas that came forward was what we're calling a skatable pathway. So there's a path, but this is the parking lot at Roosevelt Imagination Stations up here. Walk, it's about 300 feet in, and yes, we could leave the old asphalt crumbling there, but we thought we'd do a brand-new concrete skatable path on this side and a pedestrian path on the other side that leads to the shade structure. So along this will be about four or five or six more components that people can skate on as they come to the actual park and then get on to the main things. So a lot going on, very exciting. Um, it'll be, there's additional fundraising, as you mentioned, going on for those components as we speak. Um, originally, the budget set by the city was $250,000, 125,000 coming from general fund reserves, and the other 125 was coming from community donations. We've obviously exceeded that. So the money we're reaching to get to the 325 plus contingency is all donated funds above the 125, and any of this new park will be also donated funds. So I want to be clear about that. Um, as of today, I have a new number. The money in the account here at the city is 217,000 in donations, plus the 125 from the city. So we're now at $342,000. That's in cash in hand. There's another 70,000 plus or higher in commitments, and that number continues to rise. Um, so our goal is to get much higher and probably getting closer to 500,000 when it's all said and done. So we do want to thank the community for really stepping up. It's an amazing project, and the community's really come forward, and there's still opportunity for people to step up and do that. So tonight, what we're asking for, a recommendation, is, uh, based on the Parks and Recreation Board, the skate park committee and staff is recommending approval of the resolution, which is phase two construction of the Oconomowoc Skate Park, awarding the contract to Evergreen Skate Parks in the sum of $308,500, and to include an additional 10% contingency of $30,850 for a total number of $339,350. Um, additionally, it's recommended we approve a budget amendment for $105,850 with funds coming from donations. And, uh, I have one more real good bit of information to share with you, but I think we should have a vote first.
You include the $1,000 we just got from Oconomowoc Parks and Trails?
I believe, actually, that's.
343.
You're right. That's a commitment, but not actual funds. So yes, that will be adding to it.
That was a check. It looked like a check.
Right. It was close. There was no decimal points either, so it could be higher.
So I do have another $2,600 in checks here that I need to give Laurie. It, that does come in fairly decently, so.
So we, we will be putting out for bid a couple more pieces of shade structure, the flat work, I call it, for concrete. That'll be coming back to council, and as we have more donations coming in, we'll be bringing that forward. And, uh, again, our timeline is to have us all done by September 1st or Labor Day weekend.
Great. Uh, wonderful job by everybody. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So move Kavieski?
Second, Ellis.
Any further discussion? Alderman Mulder?
Just to be clear on the math, so, um, the 339, I get the 105, we don't have all that in possession. We have commitments from it.
No, we do have that in possession.
Okay.
So 105 is on top of the 250, correct? So it gets a little confusing, but it's, it's all donations for that. Um, so we, we had budgeted 250,000. Because it's grown, we've added that to, make it 355 and change.
Alderman Kavieski?
We've had conversation about this. I want to make sure that I understand this part of it. We do have additional money coming in. There are additional elements, and I want to make sure that what we're doing today accommodates for those additional elements so we don't have to come back for another amendment, um, in the, in the process of that. Does this, the way this is presented, does that accomplish that?
Laurie, do you want to speak to the financial plan?
So what this budget amendment covers is phase one, which was 16,500, and phase two, which is 339, for a total of 355 and some change, which we have currently in hand. So my biggest thing on this budget amendment is I need to have a budget amendment that authorizes the spending of the current contract that we have. I understand that there's more fundraising coming in, and as you know, I quarterly bring grants to council, and that would authorize, during those quarterly things, that would authorize spending, additional spending as the funds come in to that account number. If you have a project that comes up sooner and you have the money sooner than quarterly grants to council, which is actually the next one, it'll be July. So, um, if you have a project and a contract and the funds that come in, then we would bring it as a special, you know, we'd bring it back to council. When you approve the contract, you'd approve the budget amendment. In order to spend funds out of that, out of that account number, I need to have a budget for it. So as the funds come in, we'll continue to put them into the grants to council unless you need it sooner than we can do a budget amendment sooner.
Alderman Kavieski?
So from a timeline standpoint, in order to deliver this by September 1st, we're going to need to be able to bid the skatable path, the shade structure, and the, the flat work associated with the seating area. Those funds will be in prior to July. If we have to wait to July.
I'm not saying you have to wait until July. I'm saying the next regular grants to council comes to you in July. If you have the funds sooner and you need a contract sooner, while we're approving the contract would probably be the right time to do the budget amendment if you need it sooner than that. Currently, I, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is I can't, I can't have you approve a contract if I don't have the funds, right? And I can't spend them without the budget amendment. So right now, we have the funds to cover this contract and the 16,500. We're totally good with this budget amendment. The next contract that you bring forward, we'll want to do a budget amendment for, with the funds that you have in hand. We'd want to make sure we have the funds in hand before we award a contract.
Yeah, and that's, that's really important because there have been projects throughout the years in the city where there have been promises, and then people don't deliver on those promises, and we've seen that firsthand, or I've seen that firsthand. So we want to really be careful to protect the city, but anything that we can do to move this forward to try to hit?
Yeah.
That goal of being operational by September, I, I know the city, we'd like to do whatever we can to help move that forward.
It's a great project, and it's expanded beyond what we have originally budgeted for. But as you keep bringing them in, you keep bringing the fundraising in, I don't see a problem bringing it forward to council as we, as we move forward with contracts.
We'll try to do everything we can to expedite it. We just need to know where it is.
Alderman Rosick?
Oh yeah, just briefly. So if, 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 let's say, let's say that another 50 grand comes in for the rest of the path, we could get that in front of the council the next meeting to approve that?
As soon as you have a contract ready to approve, sure.
Mm-hmm. I mean, just, yeah, I mean, because I think, just like with, uh, with 517 and what we did with the, the teardown, I mean, we want to keep, I think it's important for both these projects that they keep moving forward.
Right.
And we want to keep the energy for both of these parks. If there's a lot of stuff going forward, we want to help the skate park get those funds as quickly as possible. Because, you know, it's not like anybody's, we're not trying to shove the skate park or shove Rockwell Park down anybody's throat. What we're trying to do is meet expectations and try to do something cool for the community. So, I mean, you have the support of doing that. We just have to do it through the right process, and I think this process is right to start, and then however we can help to keep moving it forward. I think the council is very much in favor of that.
Alderman Kavieski?
One more. Just so council is clear, what I was looking for is the, the ability to approve the contract because those are cash in hand and they can start. And to amend the budget one time as opposed to multiple times over the course of the summer in order to hit the timeline to amend it once with a budget amendment that sets a new ceiling, we set a $250,000 budget initially last year with only $125,000 of that coming from the city. So that is, that is the discussion that I've had over the last few weeks, is to raise the budget from 250 to, let's say, 450. We're letting a contract for 339 because that's cash in hand, but allows us to let additional contracts between now and the time those funds are raised in an expeditious way without doing yet another budget amendment.
Yeah.
Which is.
And unfortunately, I mean, one, I was not aware of that at all.
Aware of what?
Aware of, of that approach. And secondly, we can't really discuss it. It's not in the agenda, so we got to be careful because of open records.
What I think is.
That's what I was just told in legal counsel.
Okay. I, I think what he's just trying to say is he wants to change a budget amendment from 105 to a different higher number.
Correct. But we're talking about letting a contract.
I, I understand. I understand.
We're not talking about amending a budget on a project and that.
Sure we are.
It wasn't. Okay.
Alderman Kavieski? We'll get to the bottom of this. I mean, I think we all want.
I mean, I think we all want the same objective. We just got to make sure we do it the right way.
Correct.
Let's, let's be positive, everybody.
I'm trying really hard to be positive here. Be it for the resolve that the City of Oconomowoc approves a budget amendment of 105,850. I'm looking for that to take our total to a $450,000 amount, which is the budget amendment portion of this resolution. The contract let is stated above that. I'm not going to argue with it.
It says, "Consider Act on Resolution 21-R294 for approving Phase Two Construction Contract." That's what we're talking about.
Right. Because it was, that's how it was presented.
Yeah, but it's in the, but, but in all fairness, to Lou's point, we're approving the resolution that approves the contract. And then the resolution is a budget amendment that has a specific line item.
Correct.
And if we want to change that line item, it's certainly been properly noticed up by things.
No, it doesn't say, "And consider changing the budget relating to this park."
It does.
The public doesn't know. I disagree.
That the city council...
You can ignore me.
No, I'm not. I'm just saying, I want to talk through it and be respectful. That the city council approves a budget amendment of blank.
It's not on your agenda.
But there's no possibility.
It's on your notice to the public. The public doesn't know that you...
Alderman Mulder?
We can't, I think the point is, we can't approve the, we can't approve the contract unless we make the budget amendment because the contract is more than, than we originally agreed to in the budget. So we have to approve the budget amendment first in order to even approve the contract.
That's true. Correct.
So we can, we can set whatever budget amendment we want. We can say we want 450 for the budget amendment and 339 of that is going to go towards Contract A.
Correct.
Is that not?
That makes sense to me, but we're getting no's here, so we got to...
Here's the deal. If you would want to put more money into this project and approve the contract, you need to change the budget to approve this contract, okay? But you don't have to throw another half a million in, just as an example, in order to approve the contract.
Correct.
So the budget amendment is completely ancillary to...
Approving the contract.
Approving the contract. And that's what I'm trying to explain.
I understand that.
But we still have to approve a budget amendment.
Yeah, no, no, I agree with that.
In this part, yeah. And all of the additional fees are not coming from the city. They're coming from donations to that point. So Alderman Kavieski?
So if I made a motion to amend the 105,850 to 255,850, it would give the budget amendment the ability to move forward with additional project elements that are currently being fundraised for, that are in the bank and shown on this representation. And that's what I would look to do.
It makes common sense. I agree with that. The question is, can we do it? Yes or no, attorney?
I've given my opinion. I'm done.
And your opinion is?
No. You can either approve this contract and that's that. You need to have a budget amendment to approve the contract and that's what we're talking about. That's what the public was advised.
Matt Trebatowski?
Yeah, not, not anything to do with the legal aspect of it, but I think just from a financial standpoint with this recommendation, I don't think we want to be approving a budget amendment for funds that maybe may have been pledged and likely will come in. But I don't like seeing a budget in place where we don't, we don't have the funds available.
Alderman Mulder?
I, I agree with that sentiment. We did do it the first time, though. We said we'll approve a budget of 250, but we're only giving you 125. So we already, we've already kind of established that. I think in this case, Lou, no matter what, the contract has to come back here.
Correct.
So we're going to, I think we're going to approve the budget, we'll have to approve another budget amendment and another contract. So it's, we're splitting hairs here.
It's process.
It's process. And yeah, it seems like we could do it, but it's still going to require another vote that I'll support in the future.
Yep.
So I'm, I think let's move on and we'll...
Yep, we'll move on. It's going to be great.
So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
One second. I have to get back to, I don't know where it went. Here we go.
We prove it as is.
Here we go. Okay. Alderman Mulder.
Hi.
Alderman Shellpepper. Alderman Kavieski. Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
And just a comment, Alderman Kavieski, when it's ready to bring again, let us know. We'll get on the agenda very quickly. I just try to give us as much heads up notice. Thank you.
Better put it on the next one.
Onto Consider Act, Developers Agreement for Prairie Creek Ridge Subdivision Edition Five.
Everything you learned by being on the end of the agenda? I appreciate it. The item before us tonight is Development Agreement Prairie Creek Ridge Edition Five. That means they did the original and this is the fifth addition to that. It's a 24-lot, single-family subdivision. This is up on the northeast corner of the city. There's a large outlot that'll have condominiums. They've been discussed in the past. That is not part of this developers agreement. That will come back through separate when that project is ready. The development agreement that's in the packet tonight is exactly the same as the other ones with the exception of the new wording for street trees, which was placed in this one, which requires the developers to cut a check for $40,000 at time of final plat and then the city will be installing the trees within that development.
Any questions for Mr. Frye or the developer in the audience? Like to entertain a motion, please?
So moved Rozak?
Second, Ellis.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Onto staff reports. Whitman Plot Park Survey Update. Mr. Hapner?
You don't want to stick around for this? Go home. Stay, don't yell at me, but I do have to say this. Late this afternoon, I've talked to the designer for the skate park and he'll be in town on June 1st, which is about a month ahead of what we originally thought. So that's good news. They're ready to roll. All right, Thackeray Trail, real quick. If you remember when Mark brought Thackeray Trail Street Construction Project forward, we were losing our playground and building a large pond. The city had set aside allowance up to $50,000 for playground equipment. And the city council suggested at that point that we should ask the neighbors if they were interested in new playground equipment, which is a great idea. So we did that. We sent out about 350 surveys to each dwelling unit in the neighborhood, every single house and apartment. And we received actually 83 of them back, which I thought was very good, about 25%. And the two things you need to note, 45% of the respondents said they used the park six or more times a month. And 80% of the people said they use it at least once a month, which I thought was very telling. And we asked a couple of basic questions about what they used, what they liked. And then the last question was, do you want to see the city spend up to $50,000 to replace the playground equipment? And 84% of the people said yes. So we took that to the Park and Rec Board this past meeting and they voted to say yes to build the new playground equipment up to $15,000, $50,000. Our plan would probably be to work with the neighborhood over the winter to do the planning. It's always nice to involve them. We bring kids in, families, to let them pick the amenities, the slides, the colors, the type, within the budget, of course. And then we would build this next year because the construction project's really going to last probably till November. So that is the plan going forward. I just wanted to share that with you. Thanks for your support and input on that. And I can answer any questions.
What do we have? We have 50,000 set aside?
Correct.
For the park? Do you think that's going to be enough for what we can fit there?
Well, we, we did Hickory Woods for about that price.
Okay.
If we can stay away from fencing, that'll be the question. But yeah, I think for the, the size we have, it makes sense.
Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other staff reports I'm not aware of? Okay, thank you. Let's move on to reports and comments from Alderman. Alderman Ellis.
Okay. This last weekend, there was a function that happened at City Beach, which was the Jump for Archie. I think it was outstanding for those that were there in attendance, for those that put their time in. I believe that it was a success in making us aware of the concerns with so many issues out there, especially with suicide and drug abuse. Going forward, however, I, I would like to, hopefully, keep that event as safe as possible. Something happened to me on that day that, as I was driving home, I said to myself, if it really wasn't for the fact that I really do know how to swim, I don't think I would have, I would have probably drowned. Regardless of the fact that the water was as cold as it was. And we began the process of going towards the platform. As I took my third stroke, my body locked up. My hamstrings cramped, my back cramped. And it was all because of the fact that that water was tremendously cold. What concerned me was not that, but what concerned me was the fact that we didn't have any individuals in the water that if I had gone under, would have been able to help me. I would like to suggest that next year, when this does happen again, that we get EMTs or we get somebody that is maybe in a kayak or something along those lines that can be right in the middle there. So if something does like that happen, that there could be a first response. Now, yes, the EMTs were there, but they had to be at least 70 to 80 meters away from me and they had full gear on. So by the time they took all their gear off and got into the water, I could have been down three times. So I would just like to recommend that next year, that you all, those that will be doing and attending it are very sensitive and that maybe you have some sort of emergency contingent to make sure that that doesn't happen. But I, I, I thought that the, the whole day was, was great. The singers were great. The band was great. The bands, I should say, were great. And yeah, that's all I really have to say. So thank you.
Alderman Kavi... Alderman Kavieski?
Alderman Ellis, thank you very much for recognizing the SOFA event on, on Saturday. It was an amazing day for the community and for creating awareness for those who struggle with substance use and recovery, suicide prevention and mental health. The Jump for Archie, this was the seventh annual event to honor Archie Bedura's life and the mission that Lori Bedura has started with SOFA. Every year that the jump occurred, has occurred at City Beach, including this past year, there are multiple lifeguards on standby on the beach. And they were there again this year.
I didn't see them, but maybe I didn't see them.
Yep. Safety is, is utmost priority for SOFA, Lori Bedura and the entire planning team. So I, I completely appreciate the temperature of the water. I jumped in twice just because, why not? But, but yeah, because I'm not that smart. But, but there were safety people there and there are, and there are every year. And I know several that opted not to, to jump this year just because it was cold. But again, incredible, incredible series of events, incredible day. The 988 5K Suicide Prevention Walk Run is one of the first events in the entire country to help bring awareness to the three-digit national suicide prevention hotline number, 988. So I think as a community, we have a lot to be proud of with that. There are a couple other quick comments. We, we have created as a community an effort to support our Oconomowoc Police Department and the fundraising efforts to help get body cameras for our officers. There is a Facebook page called Oconomowoc Supports the Blue. Coming up, May 28th, Cornerstone Buddies and Mr. John Sutner are putting on an event at the Banshell as a fundraising event. I believe it's going to be extremely successful. And the goal is to, to have more events over the course of the summer, to hit the number that'll help support our officers, keep them safe as well as our community. There is no other community that I know of that appreciates and supports those who put their lives on the line every day in public safety, from our officers to our EMS, to our firefighters. And I just want to say thank you. And I'm very excited and proud to be a part of that effort. And I know Alderman Rozak is part of that effort as well. And I appreciate his support and help. And as a team, more community members are coming on board and I'm sure everybody here on council will, will help at some point or another as well. So there's that, there's a matter that has come up to this council previously as a result of a vehicular incident on Highway Z and the bypass, in the 67 bypass. City Administrator Trebatowski has provided us with a summary of recommendations. And I have responded to that and I hope we can encourage our, our county and state and find ways to expedite some of those safety measures to ensure that the next incident there is not anytime soon and is not a fatality, which is what had to happen there to begin with in order to get the streetlights there. It shouldn't require a death in order to do what the mayor so eloquently mentioned earlier, is apply common sense to policy. So hopefully that continues to move forward. The, the last thing that I'd like to mention in my comments is that currently, I believe, and then City Administrator Trebatowski, if you could correct me if I'm wrong, the, the city's policy is a mandatory mask wearing for employees. We had a great conversation. I really appreciate that. And you said that that policy would be revisited as CDC guidelines are updated. I believe that has occurred over the last week. I wouldn't, I'd like to see and have always respected the individual's choice to wear or not wear the mask. And I believe that should be our policy for our employees as well. So I hope to see our policy follow in line with the new recommendations tomorrow. So we are coming out of an unprecedented pandemic. The responses associated with that, I'm not going to get into. But we are coming out of that and this community has responded incredibly well. And I'd like to see our employees have the option to wear or not wear those masks moving forward. With that said, that's it.
Any other comments from Alderman? Alderman Rozak?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend and add an agenda item to the next council meeting, which would be Consider Act on Resolution 21-R2949, awarding contract for police dispatch study and related budget amendments. I was told that this would not be added. And I'm going to ask council for a majority vote to add that back in for discussion with the full council, which we did not have last time. I, according to the city attorney, I need five Aldermen. And I need five Aldermen to sign something in writing, which I do have here in writing, which is just that motion. So that's my motion.
How do we proceed, Stan?
Well, let's have a little background to how items are placed on agendas in different cities and villages and towns. A lot of times you have an ordinance that deals with that. Some municipalities have as few as two individuals on the governing body that can get a matter placed on the agenda. You have an ordinance under 2.01 sub 3 that... You have an ordinance under 2.01-sub3 that states, it, it, it says special meetings. Special ma, special meetings may and on written request of five Aldermen shall be called by the mayor. Written notice of the same shall be personally served on each member, which you wouldn't do if you signed it tonight, 'cause you've already got it, but bottom line is, here, if there's a majority of alderpersons that state in writing that they would like a matter placed on the agenda, then it shall be placed on an agenda. Now, the specific language says a special meeting, I read that, boy, common sense is a theme tonight. Common sense would tell you that if five Aldermen wanted it on the special meeting that would be concurrent with the next common council meeting, it wouldn't be a special meeting, it would just be placed on that agenda. The other thing, I, I think this is a perfect way to handle it, because now we're in an open meeting. In order for you to get five alderpersons to request a meeting, questionably, arguably, you'd be talking outside of a regular meeting-
And getting people to sign.
And potentially being accused of having a walk-in quorum, it could be argued, I'm getting academic here, that it isn't, because you're just asking about whether to place a matter on an agenda to talk about, but invariably, you're gonna go beyond that and start talking about the, you know, the actual matter. So, I think this is a perfect way for this council to proceed, you have the, sort of the nuts and bolts in your ordinance, and so I, I, I think that this is perfectly appropriate way of getting something on an agenda. So, if Alderman Rozick passes this around and you get five votes, then it goes back on the agenda. There's been a lot of questions about Robert's Rules of Order, I could talk for an hour about how Robert's Rules of Order in the rules itself has a hierarchy of federal, state, local law that trumps Robert's Rules of Order. No matter what you do, you still don't get it on the agenda, even if you follow Robert's Rules of Order. I've always taken the position that, and it's the law, that, you know, open meetings law trumps Robert's Rules of Order. So, it, a lot of questions, wait, wait a minute, you were in the minority, or you were in the minority, you lost, you can't bring it back. No, that, this is the appropriate procedure from my perspective as city attorney.
How do you want me to do, I mean, I, I don't really need a second on the motion, then, it just passes around.
No, you just pass it around, and if you get five signatures, it's done, in my opinion.
So, yeah, so let's start with Andy, and let's just go this direction, and then see what happens.
Mayor, you don't get to sign it.
I know.
Lucky you.
So, while we're waiting through this process, I do want to compliment Alderman Rozick in that he is trying to do the process the right way, and something that he's passionate about, and so he did reach out to city staff and legal counsel, so that they brought it to all of you in a format that could be actionable if you want it to be, so nicely done.
And all this does is it just brings it back in front of us, right?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor? Why did you choose to not put it back on an agenda? Since we didn't have-
Because, yeah, the reason I didn't put it back on the agenda is it been voted on multiple times, and I think it sets a bad precedent that all of a sudden, something doesn't go your way, and then now we set a precedent that if you're not happy, we're gonna have multiple revotes on stuff? So, if we're gonna have a revote, and we do that next week, so be it, I just want to warn council that we're gonna look like a bunch of buffoons in the future if we do this, and how, how the public views this action is up to you, but I'm not in favor of this action in this fashion, and my recommendation is if you want to bring it, bring it back during budget. That's the appropriate way to do it. That is up to you to decide, I'm not judgmental on any of those aspects, I just want to make sure you know the rules, 'cause we got caught not knowing the rules on a vote with what a supermajority was if somebody wasn't there. So, as we continue to learn these, we just want to become educated and make a good decision in that aspect. Alderman Spiegelberg.
Do we get to speak to this?
I would say yes.
Okay.
Open for comment, unless you have an objection.
And I know that Alderman Kavieski and Alderman Rozick are, are pretty much driving this train, and I consider them friends, we've gotten a lot of great things accomplished, you know, over the time I've been on council with you, but I feel like I'm in a movie, I feel like I'm in Groundhog Day, we just keep bringing this back around and bringing this back around. On May 4th, we actually took a legitimate vote, because based on state statutes, we had to have six council members. If this was so important, I feel like that would've been very apparent to those who were here and are passionate about this issue. With that, this could've been tabled till today with only five votes, and that would've happened, but this is just so disruptive, you guys, and it's messing with the livelihood of our dispatchers and our police. Every day, they sit on their jobs and they're looking over their shoulders, wondering if they're gonna have a job. We trusted in our previous captain, previous captains, previous chief and current chief to advise us that it was in the best interest of our community to keep our dispatch at this time. We also did a sort of verbal promise to our constituents that we wouldn't look at this for another four or five years, and so that's still where I stand on this, is that we do a study, but we don't do it at this time.
Alderman Shellpepper.
I just wanted to clear the record on one thing, our parliamentarian was not clear on even what the rules were for a supermajority before we took the vote, and so we, we weren't even fully informed of what the decisions were, or what the obligation to meet was, and that's up to our parliamentarian, so that didn't happen.
That's true.
And I'm not putting it all on you, Stan, but it was a significant part-
But this is true.
Because we could've tabled it, we could've tabled it otherwise. We could've tabled it before the vote, and it would've happened.
That's fair, you're right.
No, that's correct. Alderman Kavieski.
The, the, the reason for this coming back is because it does affect the full community, and it does deserve the vote of the full council, and that is why this is coming back at this time as opposed to waiting for the budget. It may have to be dealt with at the budget, but I think full council on this topic deserves the opportunity to cast their vote for the study. And again, the study could come back saying local dispatch is the way to go, or maybe it's not local dispatch is the way to go, WCC is the way to go, but we should transition over a course of three years, because financially, we're obligated to the following things. We don't know, this is, this is not a, a, a dig on our, our dispatchers, I personally have sat with our dispatchers multiple times, and they are top-notch. This is about public safety as a whole, and, and how that public safety departments are unified in their dispatch to provide the best quality service and, and safety. That's it, that's as clear as it gets to me.
Alderman Mulder.
I don't know why I feel the need to always justify myself on this subject, but it seems to be just a habit now, I'm forming, so again, I'm voting for the, I want to reopen the discussion on the spending the additional $12,000, this is in no way any type of representation of how I will vote in the future, and the, the reason I'm voting for it today is because I 100% believe if we knew that we needed six votes, someone would have tabled it, and I would've voted for it this week anyway, so I'm, I'm being consistent in signing that piece of paper, although I did struggle with it.
So, I think what we'll do is table the discussion for the next meeting, I think that's the appropriate venue. Right now, we have a request, and can you read the results, please?
Yes, there are seven votes to move this on to the next agenda. They're all the Aldermen signed, except Alderman Spiegelberg.
So, that will be placed on the next agenda? I'd like to open it up for any other comments from Alderman, Alderman Rogers?
I just have a technical question, livestream died about 15 minutes ago, does anybody understand why? Not that, I mean, there's, my wife is actually watching and sent me a message, I'm not-
Yeah, right.
She knows where I am, at least.
Okay.
An eye on you, Andy.
I understand.
Any other comments from Alderman, Alderman Spiegelberg?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I sent an email out to you guys, but I wanted to congratulate Tina Wallace on her design on the municipality magazine, and also our city clerk, Diane Conan, who wrote a fabulous article in here about what city clerks actually do, so, congrats.
Good. Good. Any other comments from Alderman? Good. Reports, comments from Mayor? I just had a, a quick comment just to help with regard to the masks and employees, that decision is between our protection person, Mr. Freiber, and Mr. Travatowsky, they've been looking at that consistently over the last several months, and they will be making final decisions as to what to do that they, they feel are in the best interest of the city. That's where that, that lies. With regard to some of the intersection stuff, I just want you to know that the city has been working, and the staff has been working really hard with multiple meetings with the DOT, and so I don't want you to feel at any point in time that the ball's been dropped, they've been working with that at an accelerated level, as we've also been doing with looking at trying to get that tunnel open, that's another very, very dangerous area. So, if you have any further questions on some of those items, masks, talk to Matt, if you want to talk about some of the DOT stuff, I'm fully informed, I'm happy to talk to anybody. Other than that, I have no comments, I just want to thank everybody for coming, and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mulder's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great evening, everybody.
You too.